Okay, all right, we are recording, so the time is 6:35. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Newcastle Planning Board on, say, January 21st, 2021 to order. And I'm going to mute everyone here as soon as I can figure out how to do that. There we go. Yes, okay. And then. Oh, wait a second. No, okay. All right. First order of business. We have some minutes to look at and approve. From Thursday, September 17th, 2020, and December 17th, 2020, the September 17th set of minutes is quite bulky. That was our joint public hearing prior to the vote on the core code back in September. Our former secretary had started work on these and they're there. She wanted them to be as comprehensive as possible because they are, you know, the record. And then we weren't recording meetings or that we weren't recording that meeting at the time, so. All right, so I would entertain a motion on the minutes separately or together. Do we have a motion on the minutes? Just to show of hands is fine. Yep, motion. Kevin moved and Peter seconded. Any conversation, questions, corrections, addendums to the minutes? Anybody have anything they saw that needed addressing? Very comprehensive. I wanted to say thank you to Shelley for the latest minutes. I worked with her a little bit on, you know, kind of the scope of the minutes. And I just wanted to relay quickly a part of my conversation to the planning board that I had with Shelley, which is that because we're recording all of our meetings now, the actual recording can serve as the official minutes of the meeting. And it's complete, obviously, whatever we say, whatever we do is being recorded and stored and saved. The minutes, the paper minutes are, you know, there as well and can be looked at and referenced anytime in the future. And that's what we approve. However, because we have the recording that can serve as the official. So what I told Shelley was, unlike how Harriet really tried to capture everything that absolutely everybody said at that public hearing. You don't need to necessarily do that, you know, a short synopsis of the discussion, what the pertinent points were. And I said, you know, the real, the most important thing is to capture who made the motions seconds, what the vote was. You know, and who voted, which way. Those are things that absolutely need to be recorded. But other than that, you know, synopsis is a synopsis, sees synopsis is fine. And so she was glad to hear that. She was feeling like she had to really put more in there. So anyway, I think she did a great job on the minutes and I just wanted to say thank you to her for that. Any further discussion about the minutes? All in favor of the minutes? That passes four to nothing. Okay, so. Let me pull out my agenda again now that we've got these out of the way. All right, so we have one application before us. Prepared, I believe, and submitted by Alan Matheson is with us tonight. In a minute, I will go through and let everyone make introductions and tell us what your, your, your interest is here tonight. And then, and then we'll move into the discussion part of the application. But I just wanted to quickly recap for folks that are watching. This is for doing about a parcel of land that would be a lot that would be divided. That's in the Perkins Point subdivision. It's lot 14. It'd be a single lot division from a larger lot carving off a smaller lot to create a two acre lot to be sold for a primary seasonal residence. And that was the description that came with the, with the application. So the map is map three lot 65 slash two. And the district that we're talking about in reference to the core code is District One, the rural district. So we'll be talking about that later. I'm gonna unmute everybody now here and if I can. How do I unmute all? Ask all to unmute. There you go. And we'll go around and make introductions. Alan, why don't you start us off?
Hi, Alan Matheson.
Excuse me. You submitted the application, but you are.
Yeah, so I'm the surveyor who prepared the document. So feel free, ask me any questions you may have and we'll see if we can help out.
Just to be clear, you submitted, you submitted, you filled out the application submitted on behalf of the landowner who is with us, Derek Leck.
Correct. Yes. So, yeah, right. Derek's the record owner of the property. And so we've just prepared the, to amend a portion of the subdivision to convey off this portion of Derek's remaining property.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see, Ryan and Bobby, go ahead and tell us.
Bobby, we have Ryan McPherson's Realtor, Ryan's the buyer of the property. And one correction on your earlier spiel there, Ben, it's a year round house.
Year round house, okay. All right. All right. We also have with us James, Jim Cosgrove with us.
I, I'm, I'm the Realtor for Mr. Leck and basically just here as an observer.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we also have Mr. Leck with us tonight, not on video, but thank you for joining us as well.
Sure.
So I, as I was reviewing the application, I had a couple of questions, but I'd like to start off by breaking this discussion into two parts. The first part would be procedure for reviewing the application. The second part would be reviewing per, you know, whether the the proposal is permissible. And and the reason I want to do that is because of sort of following the breadcrumbs through the through the ordinance. My immediate question was how, how, how do you, how does it work to break off a portion of a lot that's in an approved subdivision and what are the implications for how the application is processed? What is the actual procedure that we need to follow? So I'll ask everyone to kind of bear with me as I lay out a little bit. And then we can have a discussion about the process and procedure. Yes, James.
Um, a little bit of history here. This was, and for those who've been around top, why you remember Russ Noack and and how this subdivision came about. Alan, you correct me if I'm wrong, please. The portion we're talking about here, the 24 acres Mr. Leck owns now was not part of the subdivision. There was other land of Noack there that was subdivided. Am I, am I correct with that, Alan?
Well, actually, it is. The plan was amended back in 2013. And it combined the lot into and part of the subdivision. So, so today, the actual Derek's property is part of the subdivision. And hence, while we follow, you know, the main statute, 33, section 4407 is there and in place for the scenario for us to amend a piece of property within an existing subdivision. So.
Okay.
Yeah, a little bit.
It's an interesting history with the subdivision.
Sure. It is. Yeah. And it wasn't too long before that. It was just like you said, Jim. This property was a remaining lot outside of the subdivision. And a short period of time, I believe, two years later, it was amended and became part of a subdivision.
So, yeah, thank you guys very much. Subdivision can be a little bit of a tricky thing. And so I guess I'd like to start by turning to page to just discuss the process and sort of outline how we're gonna follow this through here. If we turn to the administration section of the core code, which starts on page 80 of the core code. Subsection 12 subdivision. And, and then we go down one more page to item H, which is on page 82. I'm gonna try and see if I can screen share this for everybody. Share screen. That one. Okay, does everyone see that? Amendments and modification?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. Our CEO Ken Vinyl is just joining the. I want to make sure he gets in here. Ken, can you hear us?
We can now.
Great. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, I had a tough time getting on.
Sorry about that. I think I missed a call from you. I apologize. We're just reviewing or beginning to review the procedure for doing the subdivision. And so here under item H, it outlines how you make an amendment or a modification to the subdivision. And whether the modification of the amendment is, you know, minor and doesn't require, you know, full approval, or if the modification to the subdivision does require more. And what I draw your attention to would be basically item two. Item one says if you're moving something to, you know, change a small easement or some other thing which we're not doing, we're talking about creating a new lot by splitting a lot. I think it would fall under H2, all of the modifications to an approved plat plan constitute a new application to the planning board subject to the procedures outlined in this section. And that we would then, any revision to that subdivision plan would require new milars. So that's why we're here. So that's item one that had me sort of thinking about how we go about doing this. And then looking back at the procedure, and I'm just gonna go up here just a little bit to procedure. It spells out, you know, how we go about doing the subdivision review, the procedure that would, you know, alter the subdivision in this case. And it says that applicants are required to attend a pre-submitting meeting with the planning board. So if we look back at what that means, pre-submitting meeting, if we scroll up. Pre-submitting meeting. All right, so this is to provide an opportunity to inform applicant of relevant development standards and procedures related to the project, identify potential concerns and examine previous development review applications and permits for the site. So all of that sort of squarely falls under what's come before. We're talking about making a modification to an existing subdivision that's already been permitted and has existed for years. So we go through this process. We have a procedure that's outlined here about how that works. And I think at this point, I'd like to make the suggestion that what we do right now is consider the meeting that we are currently having our pre-submitting meeting to meet the requirement of the code. But it would then require us to hold a public hearing on the proposed change to the subdivision within 30 days. So that would be our next planning board meeting. And I would draw your attention over to where it says public hearings and public notices right here on this little table. So for any subdivision plan notice and public hearings are two criteria that have to be met before we, the planning board can consider approval or denial of the application. So one of the, the first part of that is notice. And if we go up here just a little, I know I'm going fast. I apologize, but I'm just sort of outlining what we're talking about here. Public notice starts here on page 75 and outlines the procedure for what would need to happen with special emphasis, unfortunately, because we're talking about property in D1. So all butters within 1,000 feet of the subject property in District One would need to be given notice that there's going to be a change on the lot in question. And the applicant right here, item three, it says must develop a notice containing pertinent information about the project, including the application type, location, description, so on and so forth. And that the applicant must provide copy of mailing receipt to the office of the code enforcement officer. That all has to be accomplished before the planning board or the permitting authority, in this case, I believe it's the CEO, can consider the application complete for review, which is why I'm kind of backing into this a little bit by saying if we consider tonight's meeting, a conversation, a pre-submitting meeting to have a conversation about what needs to happen to get this project moving forward. These are the things that would need to happen. And this is the process that we have to follow based on the code. And then after all of that would happen, the notice, the public hearing that we schedule, this would be to allow a butters of the property to either participate in the public hearing that we hold in a month or provide written, you know, statements about their support or concerns regarding the project, which can be read out at the public hearing. But it would provide them an opportunity to do that. That's the purpose, I believe, of having that public hearing and that public notice portion for, for this type of project. I think that's where we stand procedurally. And I wanted to kind of get that out of the way before we sort of dove into the nitty gritty of how to make the, you know, the conversation about, you know, permitting of the lot and how to, how about looking at all the nitty gritty details of, of the lot split and everything like that. So I'm gonna stop sharing the screen so I can see everybody again. Does the planning board have any comments, thoughts about the procedure I've just outlined about how to move this application forward?
I have a question.
Yes, Ken.
Alan, did you take a two acre lot and split it to one acre each?
No, the, that portion was a 20. The remaining portion. I don't have it in front of me. It was block 14 and it was over 10 acres. That's where this two acre portion is coming from.
They still have to be two acre lots.
Yes. Yep. And so we, yeah, we have, we've met that requirement. Because we, the original footprint was 1.5. And then we, we gained more area from the, the title under that common area, which gave us the two acres. Yeah. So, so in this case, we still, so it is, we're not under the one acre current ruling. It's, it's too, okay. Yeah.
Before, before we discuss that, before, before we get into that, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify, make sure that everybody's on the same page about the process moving forward. And, and if we are, I would entertain a motion from the planning board to consider tonight's meeting on behalf of the applicant, their pre-submitting meeting. And I think we should just vote on that to make it official, but that's what's happening. Sorry. Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Another question and, and, and just because I'm confused in my mind. Does Mr. Leck have the ability to sell one lot every five years without going through the subdivision? Or is that precluded now in the new code?
No, because where this is part of a subdivision, he'll, we'll have to go through a subdivision review process for each law. Because the impact is to the whole, where Derek's remaining 24 acres is in fact part of the subdivision. Before we do any other conveyances, it'd have to go through municipal reveal.
So just so I understand, Mr. Noack was able to do, because that was pretty much the way he subdivided his property.
Right.
Was able to do that because he hadn't put his remaining land into the subdivision.
Yes, you got it. Okay. So, so Mr. Noack and going back in the history had a portion conveyed off portions of this larger tract of land. And he did it within the statutes of not triggering municipal reveal to a point in time when it became necessary for him to actually formulate, you know, incorporate these lots into a subdivision. And as the case in 2013, when the remaining 24 acres was amended into the subdivision, Perkins Point subdivision. So going forward here, everything will require municipal review.
That's correct. As long as it is a part, as long as the changes that are being proposed or the project, if there's a building or whatever, is part of subdivision. Yes, then that's, you got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So do we, do we have a motion about making this the applicant? Thank you, Nick. I saw you first. So Nick motions and Peter seconds. Do we have any further discussion about? Okay, all in favor of this being the applicant's pre-submitting meeting? That passes four to nothing. Great. So we're on track. Next steps before we get into the nitty gritty, and I think it's gonna, I just want to caution everybody, we're not gonna be doing a full review tonight. We're gonna be identifying potential issues where the planning board may require more information for the application in a month when it's actually reviewed at the public hearing. So we're not gonna make a, we're not gonna make any kind of action or motion on approving or denying the application tonight. And we're also not going to, nothing that the planning board can, can say tonight should be taken as, you know, authority. It's more recommendation. It's not, you must do this, you must do that. It's, this would be a good idea. You know, the onus always, and I'm not trying to be, you know, hard on this, but the onus is always on the applicant to provide the information. But we're here to have a conversation about what is actually needed to make sure, you know, make the, the best application that we can for review in a month. Okay, so that being said, let's just quickly start off. We've got some of the history going on. Let's just have a quick from the, maybe from Ryan, you're, I understand you're the purchaser of the lot. Could we just have a quick narrative about sort of, you know, what the purpose is and what we're trying to accomplish here in the project?
It is to break off a two acre buildable, buildable lot. It's, that's the goal.
And if I understand it correctly, I don't read these things all the time, but we are talking about the portion of lot 14 that includes all of the shore frontage.
Yes.
Of lot 14.
And the shore frontage on the common.
And the shore frontage on the common area. But it's all the shore frontage of that lot.
No, it's, it's not all of it. If, if we said that, they would include a portion of the waterfront that's between lot 12 and 13. So it's not that portion.
Okay.
Does everybody see the plan?
Yep.
So if you're looking at the area that we're revising to the east, it's that portion there that's noted as a common area. 86.12 feet and following southerly along the shore. 218 feet. So that, that's the portion of lot 14 that's gonna be conveyed along, along the shore.
And the, the dock road, is that the access to the? Yes, that's the access to the proposed lot split.
Yep, right.
And on the application, I noted that you said there was 256 linear feet of lot frontage on Dock Road. Is that correct?
It, it is. Yes.
Okay, and Dock Road ends at the end of that parcel?
Um, Dock Road, no, it continues along and it services the property of Christine Leck Harriman. There's a dwelling on that peninsula.
As a driveway.
Yes, yep.
Okay. All right. Great. I think we're oriented. So I'm gonna I'm gonna suggest we all turn to the in the core code, page 12, which is the D1 rural district. That would, that this potential lot split would be in, so we can just review any standards there that might apply or, you know, need to be looked at. So all right, so we are talking about a residential use. We're not talking about any commercial activity or you're not planning on putting a dock in at this time or anything like that. The reason I mentioned the shoreline is because when you bring an application forward for, for a building project, it will have to be, you know, taken through shoreline review. And so I just want to make you aware of that. We don't have to discuss it tonight, but all those standards of shoreline will apply to this newly created lot at the time of that application. So the one thing I did want to just point out, although I don't think it's, you know, it's not an issue here since you already have the, the lot frontage requirement. But when we're talking about a subdivision, under district standards at the top of page 12, item three, subdivisions and subdivision lots created after the date of adoption of this code shall be exempt from the minimum primary frontline length standard. So though it does say that you need to have 250 feet minimum, you'd actually only need to have 100 feet if it's a newly created lot within an existing subdivision. So.
Interesting.
Yeah. So there is that. And then the lot area minimum, the one acre minimum there. I think what we need to do is also review, and I had Shelley send out to everyone, and I think I gotta find it here. When Russ Noack created the subdivision, I think it was in 83, 84 originally. There were some conditions placed on the creation of the subdivision. And I think, did everyone get a copy of those conditions? None of the conditions mention anything about minimum lot sizes. They talk about, you know, all electrical and telephone wiring should be placed underground. Primary dwelling units, dwellings shall be constructed with a minimum of 1,200 square feet, first floor living area for year round habitation. The one that's interesting to me, and I'm not, I'm still sort of trying to figure it out. So I'd love to have a discussion about it is item C, which says that all standards of the land use code of Newcastle, Maine, as they existed on January 1, 1983, shall be complied with unless said land use code is amended to require more restrictive standards, in which case the most restrictive standards shall apply. Provided however, all front yard setbacks shall be a minimum of 50 feet. Interestingly, I believe that the land use code for Newcastle is less restrictive now than it was in 1983. Though I have no copy of the land use ordinance from 1983 with which to compare. So I'm, I'm, I'm unsure how that standard factors into the discussion or the conversation here. But I think, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where you're thinking that in 1983, the minimum lot size was two acres. And your understanding is that because this item C says that basically whichever most restrictive standard you can find is the one that applies. That's what you're saying. The minimum lot size has to be at two acres, even though the new core code reduces that to one acre. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding of it.
So this is, this is one of those really interesting ones where I think what we might want to do is seek a little bit of outside assistance on the interpretation of the legality of this one. And we can invite our, you know, our town attorney to weigh in on this with us in a month to, and provide him with the documentation ahead of time. To, and provide him with the documentation ahead of time. So that we can really kind of understand how it would really work, because there's a major difference between the minimum lot size being two acres. Back in nineteen eighty-three and one acre in the rural district now. And that may have an impact to the proposal that you want to put forth ultimately. I don't know, I'm just sort of fleshing out, you know, the issues as I've sort of uncovered them. The other interesting one is item D. And it says, all primary structures proposed to be erected shall be in design and construction shall be compatible with designs and methods of construction. Utilized by similar residential projects and shall be submitted for approval to the grantors. Or if so, designed by the grantors to an association of other property owners within the project. This is confusing, but one of the questions I had is, are there, is there a Perkins Point Association? If so, are there any covenants that the association holds that would, that we don't know about? That would prevent either the lot split from happening or modify the way that the lots but can happen. And or have an impact on the development that can happen on the site. And I don't know the answers to those things because. Individual covenants that an association holds over a subdivision. Are more specific and restrictive than town ordinances. And I don't believe a town ordinance has the authority or the ability to override them.
Yeah, so this is, this is Derek Lack. On that one, I had the. Developers rights assigned to me by Russ Nowak and the deed that I, of the twenty-four acres when I purchased it in two thousand thirteen. It's clearly stated on the last page and reviewed by David Soul. His firm, he did the legal work for me. So that, that the developer rights or constructor has been assigned to me. Number one, number two, there has been a subsequent road association set up, was set up last year, twenty nineteen or a year and a half ago. But there are no further covenants on buildings or lot sizes. It only applies to the Perkins Point Road itself, which is plowing, sanding and maintenance.
Care and maintenance of the roadway itself.
Correct.
Which is, if I understand correctly, the roadway of Perkins Point subdivision is held jointly?
No, it, it actually falls on my property. So I believe Russ started with seventy acres and he started to carve pieces off. And the remaining was sold to me, including the road bed and the twenty-four acres.
Okay, great, okay, good. Wonderful.
And then just, just one other thing on, on the prior discussion point. The two acres versus one acre, it seemed like if it, if we met the two acre requirement, we would have met the worst case. And it's, it seems like a moot point, but I'm not sure.
It was a point of interest, that's all.
Got it.
Yeah, Peter McNamara, I recognize you.
Questions? The eighty-five hundred, eighty-five thousand and twenty-four square feet doesn't come out to exactly two acres. How thick is one about these things? It's just shy of two acres.
Right, and so that, that's going to round up the square footage is, is rounding up to the, you know. Even number. Right. Forty-three five.
One point nine six or something like that acres.
Right, so yeah, right, the forty-three thousand five sixty times two will equate to. And so we've, we've rounded that number.
You've rounded, okay, so you're taking one point, what I get is one point nine five one nine, you're rounding that up.
Correct.
The other question is. The common area, just looking through the deed that Derek was, was talking about. You're taking away the common area. For the rest of the subdivision, do they have an alternative? Is that something that may be an issue to them?
Well, the, the subdivision still has the rights under the easement that they've been conveyed. The fee title ownership has always been under the landowner. Of Nowak and then transferred to Lack, so all of the subdivision. Participants have lost no right or interest in that. They still have that blanket easement to use to the common area and the dock.
It's just incorporated into this particular lot.
Well, it's the easement that gives them the right, it's not the fee title to the soil.
Nick, did you have something?
Both of those things that Peter asked, and they're both asked and answered, so. I think, like somebody said, you know, if it's, if they're going to make a two acre lot, the R one acre lot minimum. Doesn't really matter. I mean, it's a, it is an interesting thing, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I, I only bring it up because, you know, we, we have, we have a month if they want to change their plan or. If, for example, the, the rounding of the map is a real issue, you know. It will clear that up easily. Otherwise, you know, I, I, I'm looking at the. You know, looking through the rest of the code, I'm, I'm looking through the rest of the district standards. Every, everything else would meet, of course, the, the restrictions that exist. On the subdivision with the, the fifty-foot. Front yard setback is, is going to be greater than the, the current primary front setback of twenty feet in that district. So that'll just have to be something that's considered again when a, when a zoning permit for a new building is brought forth. And other than that, I think, I don't, I don't honestly see any other. Issues. Other than just, you know, having to follow the subdivision modification procedure. Yeah, sorry, go ahead Bobby.
Well, Ben, what do we, what are we going with? We going with the fifty foot? Or, or do you, we have to make another evaluation? You're gonna have the town attorney look at that situation?
For the setback?
Yeah.
My understanding, and I, I mean, I can't, I'm, I'm not prepared to say right now for, with any, you know. It's not, I'm not gonna make a ruling on it, but my reading of the restrictions that are, that are placed on. The subdivision at the time of creation back in eighty-three. And the fact that it says that the most restrictive standard applies, I mean, that's pretty harsh, unfortunately. But I don't believe that a, as a matter of fact, I know that the. If the underlying zoning is changed, it doesn't relieve the conditions that were placed on the subdivision at the time of creation. There's, there's, as far as I know, there's no way to do that. So in other words, for example.
With the setback, with the water setback and the road setback, it's getting kind of tight.
It might be, it might be.
Alan, what do you think it's getting kind of tight with the setback from the water and the setback from the road with fifty feet?
Yeah, um, so is that, was that fifty feet from, is the language specific from the road or the edge of the right of way?
Okay.
Sorry.
It says, front yard setback, minimum of fifty feet. So if we follow the definition that existed in the prior ordinance.
Yeah.
That'd be from the lot line.
From the lot line, okay, not, not the, not the right of way. So in this case, the lot line. Okay, from the lot line. So if the current fee title under the road is by Derek, then the. Right away is the lot line, so we're measured fifty feet from that. Yeah, it is squeezing.
So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a question there that I don't, I don't know the answer to, which is, can, can, can these conditions be? Waved, modified, and who would do that?
Yeah, that, that's something I was thinking, you know, where Derek has the fee rights to the road and, and. Well, actually, it would, it may fall under, and of course, probably the town council will best answer this, but I think maybe the subdivision members themselves. Maybe able to vote to amend some covenances, maybe the possible avenue. And that's probably the question to ask town council.
Yeah.
And how, how to do so.
Right.
Yeah.
So my, I mean, you know, to use like a ridiculous example, if. It was written into the conditions of the approval of the original subdivision that the minimum lot size was twenty acres. And then subsequently, the land use ordinance for Newcastle, specifically the standards for that district. Changed to be whatever, something, you know, half an acre. It wouldn't invalidate the standard of the twenty acres.
Right.
So it is a question how to proceed, and I, I am not that familiar, honestly, with subdivision law. So I think it's a bit of an investigation about how to do that. However, I do know from, from subdivision law. That one of the more important things is to give all, all the people in the subdivision, our ordinance requires. You know, a butters within one thousand feet to get a letter about the project and the proposal. I would strongly recommend that you, you notify all the, all the landowners in the subdivision.
Right.
Just check that box, you know, to, to the best of your ability.
Yeah.
Gives everybody, and that, and that doesn't, and then if the project moves forward and gets approved. And then, you know, nobody can later come back and say, I didn't get, I didn't have time, you know, or I wasn't noticed, noticed that I. They wouldn't have standing to make a, an argument against the project, I guess is my point. Better to be safe than sorry, I think. All right. I mean, honestly, I think this one's pretty straightforward, Bobby.
Question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nick.
No, you, you had your hand raised.
The, the letter, there's the letter to the abbot, the thousand feet away people. Does, does it have to get into the particulars of the setbacks and the. All that, or is, is it just more general letter of, you know, we're, we're buying the land to build a home there?
So. Under mailed notice, it's on page seventy-six at the top of the page on the left-hand side. Item three says, the applicant must develop a notice containing pertinent information about the project, including. Application type, locate, project location, description, and if applicable, time, date and location of first scheduled meeting of the permitting authority. Notices must be mailed within seven business days of submission of an application, so.
And then description of the pro, project.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty basic. It's, it's not like you have to go into crazy amounts of detail, you, but you essentially have to say, you know. Lot fourteen, there's a proposal to split Lot fourteen, you know, split off two acres along the shorefront. Of Lot fourteen, that would satisfy the type of project, the location, a short written description about what the, you know. Ultimate intended use is to ensure that it doesn't violate any of those standards. That we talked about that are already on the subdivision. For example, one of the other ones at the bottom of the page. Item F, under those standards, says no commercial activity or any activity which constitutes a nuisance. Shall be maintained within the project. So if you're, you know, if it was shoreline and you were proposing to put in, you know, a fishery or something. You know, that would violate the standard. So just a description to basically say, this complies with, you know, all the. All the known standards of both the subdivision and the requirements of the zoning of Newcastle.
We going with the thousand feet or we going with everybody in the subdivision?
I would recommend everyone.
Well, right. It, it's better for down the road. If you go with the entire subdivision, everybody's on notice. Who, who may have an interest is then notified, so, yeah.
So. For the planning board, if, if there's no other questions, I, I, I wanted to just quickly review how, you know, modifications to subdivision. Or subdivision in general works, because when we need to review this in a month. The standards by which we review it are laid out. Pretty clearly. And I gotta find the page here real quick, sorry. Subdivision. So on page. Okay, so it's item F, it starts on page eighty-one, it says approval standards. And I think, you know, we should have a review and a discussion about which of these. Apply in the case of a modification, if this was a proposal for a brand-new complete subdivision, all of these would apply absolutely. However, I believe that since there is an approved subdivision plan already on file, and it has been for years. Many of these are things that don't need to be addressed by the applicant just to make a modification. And I believe that we can accept the current registered, you know, on-file application. As proof that all these conditions are already met, especially since it was already addressed, you know, a year ago, a year and a half ago. But I wanted to draw everyone's attention to it so that we can review it to make sure that, you know, we're aware that. We need to go down the list when it comes time in a month to say, check, 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 all these things are good. So. That's my only other sort of.
Mister Derek, do you have the, the way you took the property from Mister Nowak, do you have the right to? Sign off on certain things that.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, certainly what a house looks like is, is approved by me and. That sort of thing. So the, the developer rights and the, and the covenants that were referred to earlier.
Great.
Does Newcastle still have a Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other thoughts, concerns, questions about the application or how we're gonna proceed from here? No?
Should. Going, going forward from here, our. Task would be to draft that letter and send it to all of the abutters. That's, that's number one, and. Any others?
Just make sure that you send those, it, it's always best probably send those either registered or certified mail so that you get a receipt. And you, and you can, you know, give those, proof of those receipts to the CEO.
Okay, so that's what the, yeah, I remember you said something about a receipt to the CEO, so I'll. They, we just, they just need the receipts, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
A copy of the letter would be great as well, just, you know.
Sure.
Proof so people can file, along with the receipts, and then. You know, any other documentation you think would be appropriate or necessary for the submission. Since we're just talking about a lot split at this point. It's not much.
Right.
And, and, and I can't honestly think of anything else that would necessarily be a requirement. Can any, anyone else? Think of something that we might need? Yes, Jim?
Ben, would, did I hear you talk about a, a public hearing? Would you be holding a separate public hearing prior to the next meeting?
Our next meeting to review the application will simply be a public hearing. Yeah. Yeah. The way the code is written, it actually says that, you know, we have to hold the review of the application as a public hearing, so we can. You know, get those, the feedback from the butters or other concerned citizens, residents, and, and then we can. Make a determination about the application at that time.
One question, presumably you've done this before. What kind of feedback typically comes back from other residents, and is there anything we can do to prepare for that feedback to make sure it's addressed?
So, you know, they may raise concerns about, for example, and it might be worth just exploring or thinking about. Adding some language to your, your proposed letter that. that an additional lot split in a subdivision does add, you know, a slight, slightly more burden to the road infrastructure and the maintenance, you know, more cars, more people equals more travel equals more potholes equals more maintenance. So just addressing that upfront might, you know, sort of ward off some concerns that you might hear back from people about, you know, adding to the subdivision. And then, the second thing is gonna be, I think the, probably the biggest one is probably gonna be, you know, uses and nuisance. You know, people wanna just make sure that what is being proposed is both allowed and, you know, not gonna be an inconvenience to them. So, so sometimes, a more of a description about what you're talking about doing ultimately wards off some of that concern, because when people hear there's gonna be a development, you know, and they don't get any more information than that, they start imagining the worst-case scenario, so.
The biggest one I can think of is when they were putting the dorm in at Lincoln Academy. We had a, a public hearing, and the dorm was supposed to be, you know, the main floor, you know, which would have been two, three floors above level would, was supposed to open onto the track.
Right.
And the neighbors across the streets said, "Oh no, we're not doing that." And then, and it was at that public hearing that the architects actually moved the dorm to where it sits now, and then put the, the industrial building, which is much lower, you know, swapped places with that. So that was a pretty lively public hearing.
Yep.
And I, and I agree with Ben, if you just, you know, if you're gonna put in your letter, you know, I mean, it sounds like you're just putting in a residence. It's not gonna be a, you know, lighting always makes a big difference to people. What a building's gonna look like, things like that.
Okay, thanks, that's very helpful, I appreciate it.
Great. Okay. I'm, I think unless there's anything else, I think we're, we're good. We can close out this portion of the meeting. I would like the planning board to stay for just five more minutes to discuss something that's not on the agenda, that I forgot to add. But I think otherwise, we're good, if you guys are good, if you don't have any other questions for us, we're gonna go ahead and put you on the agenda for a month from now, and let me just give you that date real quick. So that will be February the 18th, which is a Thursday, at 6:30.
And Shelley will send out the link?
Yep, Shelley will send out the link.
Thank you.
Sorry Bobby, go ahead, you have one question?
You're gonna, you're gonna do a little investigation on setback for us?
Well, what I'm gonna kinda do is forward what we've got to, to our town attorney so that he can review it all, and I'll request that he's there at the next meeting to, to help us as well. Excuse me. I think it's not a bad idea to, to dig into it a little bit on your own as well, just to make sure that we're, you know.
Well, given that the restrictive covenants for the Perkins Point development had 50 feet, I mean, it wouldn't be that would apply, I mean, the worst case, rather than the 20 feet in the Newcastle ordinances.
That's correct.
So, I mean, if we, if we can agree now, I mean, go with that, is there any issue?
So, that would actually, just, just to sort of parse it out a little bit, that determination would be made at the time the application for the construction of a new building is brought forth. All we're talking about for this application is literally the lot split of the subdivision.
Got it. Okay.
So setbacks are, are, you know, when a building is proposed, that's when we talk about setbacks. Bobby, go ahead.
That's why I brought that up about if Derek, if Ryan and Derek agreed on a setback and Derek could sign off on that and make an amendment so that the setback would work for, for a proposed building.
Yeah, I just don't think we can say tonight.
No, but that's one of the, that's one of the, one of the things I think we could propose to legal counsel.
Sure. Yeah, and I think it's an, it's an absolutely a good question to ask. You know, my primary question is gonna be, how, what's the mechanism for altering the conditions that were placed on the subdivision originally? Does one exist at all? If so, what's the process? What does that look like? I just don't, I don't honestly know, so.
I don't, I don't think we would try to do that, probably.
Okay. That's fine.
I mean, I don't wanna speak for the buyer, but, you know, I wouldn't do it unless it was a certain request to do it.
Yeah, unless there's strong motivation to change that 50-foot, because it impacts, you know, the proposed site, location of the building or something like that. Yeah, I'd say we don't need to go down that road. I'm probably gonna investigate it just for my own identification, because I'd like to know. But other than that, no, I, I agree.
Didn't we run into that Ben, up on Lynch Road?
Say that again?
Didn't we run into that on Lynch Road where there was a right-of-way? And he went beyond the right-of-way to his property line? And the bank that was giving him money said, "No, we can't do that, we gotta go to the right-of-way."
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah. But that was a case where the conditions were slightly different on that one. And since we have a different code and the, the setback standard is different, yeah, that's, it's slightly different, but it's in the same ballpark, you're right. Yeah. Okay, thank you all for coming tonight, we will see you in a month.
Thank you very much.
February, thank you guys. Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
All right, so I apologize that I didn't put this on the agenda sooner, and I really just wanted to have a very quick conversation about the possibility of scheduling a workshop for, for us, for the planning board to talk about the new code. And specifically, the development of application forms and review processes. There's some changes from how the planning board handled things in the old code, that was actually written into the code. The procedure about how you follow certain things was, it was all detailed and spelled out. In the new code, some of that was held out on purpose so that the planning board could develop its own policies and procedures, and we wouldn't have to go to the town for a town vote to ask them to change one little procedure. So, it's, it's providing the, the planning board more flexibility about how we conduct our affairs, conduct our meetings, conduct our reviews. But it also does give us the responsibility of developing and maintaining application forms and, and those procedures for applicants. And I have to apologize and say that I've had some family stuff happening lately that has just made it so that I couldn't even think about this stuff until very recently. And the application that you had in your packet tonight was actually designed by, by Tor Glenn Denning, who is a selectman now and was on the zoning committee previously, and he, he took an interest and said, "We gotta have an application form available before we hit the ground running on January 1st." So, so that's what you're looking at, and that's what the applicant, the applicant filled out. And if we decide that that is great, and we wanna run with this form, or if we wanna modify it, we need to just sort of make that official and have a review of the form and, and whether or not it works. And then also, we just need to have a discussion, I think, about policy and procedure. The sort of things that it would say, in the old ordinance, it would say, you know, "We want this, and this, and this, and this," before you even come to the planning board. And in some cases, the new code, it doesn't say, for example, that a fee must be collected before you come to the planning board, and that was actually intentional. The idea was to make the planning board slightly more accessible to people who had questions and wanted to have discussions without necessarily having to put together an application and pay a fee just to come and find out, "What can I do on this piece of land?" Or, "I have an idea for a project, can you help guide me in the right direction?" That's the idea behind these pre-submitting meetings and some of these other functions that are written into the core code now, and I, I just wanted to feel everybody out and see if it was possible that we maybe meet in, say, two weeks, at our normal date and time, to have a workshop.
No problem.
Sounds good to me. Yeah.
I'm gonna be unavailable that night.
You?
No, that's fine.
That's okay, all right. I've got, so prior to all of that, you know, Tor's got this application form, which I'll get a, a copy of the blank. I'd also started developing some forms, which, again, went by the wayside, but I'll, I'll get copies of that to everyone as well. And, and really, I think if you haven't had a chance, I know it's really dry, boring stuff. But if you get a chance to review the administration section of the new core code, kinda like I was bouncing around tonight around the subdivision section, you probably could notice that the difference between the old code subdivision language and the new code subdivision language, very different. So subdivision under the new core code, it's, it's quite condensed. Under the old code, I think it was like, I don't know, 18 pages or something like that, I can't even remember, it was very long. And so, the, an attempt was made to really kinda make it simpler to navigate. And I don't know, I hope we accomplish that tonight, I don't know. But, that's just one example. But I think we should start, you know, reviewing that and also just sort of in general, identifying, or I guess, putting aside time for the planning board to have conversations about how the code is working as we process applications. Part of our responsibility is going to be to make recommendations to the select board for inclusion on annual town warrant for changes to either, you know, individual standards or processes within the core code that we found just didn't work very well, or didn't work the way that they were intended, or things that just need to be changed because they were either missed, or the standard was just wrong, or, and, and those things may not come to light until we get an application for a specific thing. But that's gonna be part of our ongoing conversation, and I just wanna make sure that we have time carved out as we go along, and it doesn't have to be long. But I think if we start in two weeks and we have, say, limit it to an hour, I'll check. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so if everyone is amenable, then that would be February 4th at 6:30 for an hour. I'm gonna, I'm gonna kill the Zoom meeting at 7:30, even if I'm, you know, me or someone else's mid-sentence, so we can go have dinner. But we'll start there.
Shelley will send a contact.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. And the other thing I wanted to just make everyone aware of was that we did receive a letter of resignation from Jim Brinkler, and so I just wanted to publicly thank Jim for all of his service over the years on the planning board. He's been a huge asset, but completely understand, you know, needing or wanting to be done, serving, and that is, it is great, and we thank you for everything you've done for the town over the years, and continue to do, especially with the fish ladder. So, if any, or if we know of anyone else that is interested, we actually have, I believe, two spots on the planning board currently available. And it would be good to fill those spots. So, even if you know someone that is just tangentially interested, you know, let, let myself or let John Duke know so that we can, you know, contact them and just sort of have a conversation about if they'd be willing to serve. All good?
Okay.
All right, without objection, meeting adjourned. Have a good night. See you later.